Now, thank you all for joining us today to meet our county council, our county leaders, and learn more about county government and the issues we all face. My name is Olivia Thorne, and I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Delaware County. And I'd like to begin with a salute to our founding mothers, who began in 1920 as the League of Women Voters of Media, and held 22 meetings in their first year. Good Lord, our 102nd birthday or anniversary was on Valentine's Day. Our founding mothers are an inspiration to us all, and we will continue what they began in 1920. It's been a busy 12 months, and I'd like to start by thanking county council for creating a Delaware County Health Department. The League did its first study in 1972, and it began its action campaign to get a health department in the county soon after. Fifty years later, we can say, we did it, and we're so happy. It only happened because of you. We've also formed a county, a league, county health department committee, and we'd like to, and you undoubtedly continue to hear from us about what we think the health department needs to do going forward. We never stop. We must add, we are very concerned about our county prison system and support the deprivatization of the county prison. The League also has created a prison committee, and I'm sure you will hear from us as we learn more about what is happening in the prison system going forward. We're also very concerned about environmental issues, open space, clean air, water, plus climate change, and what we can do and must do in Delaware County. Again, we have an environmental committee who will want to share their ideas and concerns with you as time goes by. Finally, just as our founding mothers started 102 years ago, we want to continue our campaign to register voters, teach people about their voting options, including mail-in ballots, and work to have voters be informed about candidates through the Vote 411 and Candidates Forums. This year, we want to add to our list recruiting people to sign up to be a poll worker. Our Voter Service Committee is committed to all these projects, but we recognize that people more, need more information to understand what it means to be a poll worker and understand the process of what they need to do, so they're going to be more willing to volunteer to be a poll worker and then go through the county poll worker training. We are proud of how our elections went in 2021, and we thank the county for their hard work to make it all happen. Now it's time to have you all get that chance to meet your county council executive director and five council members. We have shared with them the questions you've included when you registered, and you can submit additional questions in the chat box. Each will have five minutes to talk about their role and an issue of concern to them, and then we will spend the rest of the time on our questions that we had not, that were not addressed as council members spoke to you. Kathy Youngman, our county league secretary and member, will ask questions at the, help with questions at the end. Because I wasn't sure at the beginning, and it turns out that our Howard Lazarus, our executive director, can stay for the whole of me time, I think we'll start again instead with Monica as chair, and let you begin now. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for your continued support of our various county projects over the years, especially since we've been on board, and I know you've been doing the work far before we came along on the Health Department. So, thank you for that path that you laid for us in order to take the initiative forward and create the county health department. And so, my, my topic today is really going to be about updating you on the county health department and where we are with that process, and talk a little bit about the team we put together. So, first, just an overview from last year, kind of the steps that led up to where we were last year and what we've been doing since then. As you know, we had the Johns Hopkins study, so we started this process really immediately in 2020, prior to the pandemic, to start the process. We started meeting with the state on a weekly basis. At that point, at that time, we had the Johns Hopkins study out to really do a needs analysis of our county and looking at the health needs that exist here. From that, we created a steering committee who was, who's been working on, with our strategic planner, on our vision, mission, and logistics of the health department. We've also been able to create, since the last time we talked actually, a Board of Health. I think right when we talked, we were recruiting for our Board of Health last year. And so, we have been able to create that Board of Health. They started in April of last year, and we have five individuals on that Board of Health that come from such amazing backgrounds, and they all are county residents. We have the CEO of Penn Medicine, we have the chief administrative officer at Keystone Health, we have, you all know, Rosemary Halt, we have Oney Richards, who is our representative, and she runs our Coalition for Health in African Studies from Philadelphia, and Delaware County supports, and we also have a representative from Geisinger, who sits on our Board of Health. So, an amazing Board of Health that we've been able to put together, and they were, they have been instrumental in the process thus far. Moving on with our vision and mission for the Health Department, I want to, I think we talked a little bit about this, but really wanted to highlight, you know, one of our goals as the Health Department is to make sure that all members of Delaware community have access to the resources that can provide the opportunity to lead a healthy and productive life. And we really stated that our values for the Health Department are going to revolve around equity through the county and collaboration, making sure that we are tapping into all those resources that we have in Delaware County and collaborating and really acting as that chief collaborator. Accountability, leadership, innovation, and stewardship are all really part of the values that are important and that we will be moving forward with, with our Health Department. One of the other aspects of the Health Department is that we will be using something called a health, Public Health 3.0. And so, the goals of Public Health 3.0 are to, once again, embrace that role as the chief health strategist. And so, what that really means is tapping into the networks that are there, whether that is, you know, using services from the foundation and making sure individuals in our county know that they're there, really making sure we're communicating to others and so that they know what is out there in the county and available to them, engage in cross-sector collaboration, seek accreditation, and, you know, really looking to explore innovative ways of funding and bringing in new programming into the county. And so, with that, we have been moving forward with the processes that are required by the state. We submitted our program plan for approval, and right now, we are just in a holding pattern and waiting for final approval from the state. Through this, through the last six months, really since about September, we've been heavily recruiting our team. And so, our first phase team consists of about 70 or so individuals who are working for the Health Department in our various bureaus. So, we have our Bureau of Environmental Health, our Bureau of Personal Health, and our Bureau of Population Health. And so, when we think about that, the Bureau's personal health is really going to cover the immunizations, maternal and child health, communicable disease control. Our population health is really going to focus on pandemic and emergency response, disease surveillance, and health education out in the community. And environmental health is really focused on that, the inspections for the first piece. And so, remember when we were discussing before, the Health Department accreditation process is based on Act 315? And so, our first phase of the Health Department is really to focus on Act 315 and making sure everything that's required of us by the state, by Act 315, we are moving forward with all of those programs and putting into place what's needed there. And so, that's really what we've been focusing on with that first phase of individuals who have been hired. They are already, they're there, they've been trained, they are really, I mean, you know, we've been working on the pandemic response also over the past couple of months, but looking forward to getting that final letter of approval from the state and moving forward with the process and all of the other programs. When we think about our phases, we have kind of laid it out into a three-phase approach where the first phase is really this first year and trying to, as I said before, really become efficient and effective at what is required of us under Act 315. And then, our second phase is really to expand our capacity. So, you know, our priority needs that are not addressed under Act 315 and looking at, you know, doing a holistic needs analysis of the county from the Health Department and really tackling the issues and disparities that exist within the county and designing program that are, programs that are going to help to tackle those issues. And so, that's that second phase, which is really going to be, you know, the next three years after, after this first year. And then, after that, our goal is to really undertake the accreditation process, the national accreditation process, and become a national accredited health department. As you all know, I'm sure that we have, we have our new director of the Health Department. She started in January, and so, she's really hit the ground running and has been moving forward with all of our initiatives and continuing to move our Health Department forward for the county. And I think with that, I think I've kind of covered all in a really quick amount of time, but.
Thank you very much. I know it's really hard to ask you people to do things in five minutes. It's cruel. I'm the first one to admit it. I think then, but thank you so much, and I know there were a lot of questions about the Health Department, so you answered a lot of them, and that's terrific. Elaine, as vice chair, I think you get to go next. Elaine, this is Elaine Schaefer.
Hi, everyone. I'm so glad to be here, and I, I look forward to this every year because it's such a great opportunity to get caught up with everyone. And, you know, we've been in two years now. We came in two years ago, and we started out, as you all know, we told you about our laundry list of initiatives when we got in there, and it's so exciting now to report back on how much progress we have made on all of these initiatives. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity. And before I start with my topics, I just, I got a shout out to Monica. Dr. Taylor has been the chief bird dogger in getting this Health Department where it is right now because, you know, we're pretty much on schedule, like the, you know, we thought 18 months, and it's about 18 months. And that happened despite a pandemic where our Health Department was a little bit busy with other things, and that is because Dr. Taylor and her team bird dogged that State Department for 18 months. So, thank you. Okay, so my topics today are open space and trails, and then economic development, and then I'm going to sneak in a little bit about our Sustainability Commission. As you know, when we took office, all three of those were big, big initiatives that we had in mind that we wanted to improve on. On the open space and trails front, I could not be more, more proud of what we have gotten accomplished in the last two years. We appointed a, first thing we did was appoint a really talented group of people on the Green Space Task Force from all over the county, all kinds of disciplines, so smart, so experienced and strategic. They came up with a new, they tweaked our grant program to make it really work for our municipalities. You know, we're, we're very behind our neighbors in terms of investing in our open space and trails, and this group really gave it a lot of thought and designed a program to kickstart our, and give the support that our municipalities need to continue to put this investment in. This last year, we gave out over $7 million in grants to our municipalities, and we have made the commitment in our capital improvement plan, every year, we have $5 million in there to continue that investment, to sustain this investment, to make sure that our municipalities and ourselves, and we ourselves, have the funding that, what, that you need to protect these assets and to build more trail. Two little factoids I want to mention about the, the program that they designed, which really illustrate how thoughtful it was. One of the problems, one is about the matching. They made our green space grant, grant program no match because one of the key barriers to our municipalities, almost all of them, save two or three of them, to getting money from the state was that you, to get money from DCNR, you need a 50% match. So, for big projects, they just couldn't do it, you know, for a $300,000 project, that's $150,000. So, we designed the program to make our money the match so that they could go to DCNR and get the rest of it. And right now, it's DCNR grant season, and we are seeing that play out. They are, they are going to DCNR, they are using our money, and they are getting more money for these bigger projects, which is so exciting. The other aspect that they designed to make this successful for our municipalities is for all of our smaller municipalities that don't have open space or park plans, makes it very difficult to get grant money from anybody if you don't have a plan that's been accepted. We had guaranteed grants to these smaller municipalities and sort of a formula for a plan so that they can, in the next year, get a plan together, they have the money for it, and that, from there, they can go on to thoughtfully invest in their own open space programs. And that has been a huge hit. Almost every municipality that was eligible, that applied for it, got it, and they are on their way. And then, lastly, on the open space, I can't not mention Don Guanella. I am so proud of this board for unanimously deciding to use our power of eminent domain to save that 213 acres in the middle of the most, one of the most densely populated areas in our county. And we are now starting the process. We have a proposal coming to us next week, which will be on our agenda in about a month for the master planning process of what to do with that land. We are not going to be developing any of the forested part, but for maybe some trails, but there are 40 acres there, give or take, that are already disturbed, and we are going to go to the community through this master planning process and ask, what do you want to do with this? What is the best use of this for our county as a whole? So, that process is coming, and we're hoping to have lots of participation, and especially from the League. Economic development, again, we've made incredible progress. We, in, in the next month, we are unveiling a year-long economic development analysis and study on how to improve and increase our, our involvement and our support of the economic development in this county. It is filled with really amazing recommendations for things that we need to invest in. Some of them are, you know, making capital more accessible to our smaller businesses, to our minority-owned businesses, to women-owned businesses. Some of it is investing in our brown spaces through some of the state and federal programs. Some of it, some of it is providing technical assistance and X and capital to our entrepreneurs, and it's just amazing, and it's well timed because we happen to have a lot of ARPA money available for investment in economic development and restarting our economy. And this is a very thoughtful roadmap of how to do that in a purposeful way. Lastly, I just want to give a shout out to our, our Sustainability Commission, who has been just off-the-charts home run so far, and they are putting together our sustainability plan, which will have a baseline of where we are now and where we want to go. The key to success there is that it is populated by half incredible citizens, but half department heads in the government. So, a lot of the action that needs to be taken is, you know, though they are at the table putting, you know, coming up with what our goals are and what has to happen. And we've already started on a lot of it. We've, we've, we're changing over our fleet to electric, and we've already started that process. There's so much. And I just want to encourage everyone, if you are interested in sustainability, come to these meetings. They are fascinating. There's a website for our Sustainability Commission, and there's a link that you can join any of the meetings by Zoom. You will learn so much, and the progress that they are making is incredible. That was like speed talking, and I'm pretty proud of myself that I got through all of that.
Thank you so much, Elaine. I really appreciate, and I know you have, you're all doing so much. It's not really fair to do this. The, the next person I, working now, work on more in alphabetical order kind of thing. Kevin Madden will be our next speaker, and Kevin, what do you want to tell us? I'm sure it's about prisons.
Yes, but I want to first acknowledge the fact that I think I, not I think, I know I am the first member of county council to follow two extraordinary women serving in the roles of chair and vice chair of county council, and to be serving with a majority female county council, including Christine. So, it is truly an honor to work with these extraordinarily talented women on a daily basis. And I think it's relevant talking to the League of Women Voters. But yes, Olivia, as you mentioned, I'm going to be talking about the changes that are afoot with George W. Hill, and then briefly touch more broadly on the changes that are happening in our criminal justice system because I think what's going on with the deprivatizing of our prison is, you know, well-known, it's spoken about quite a bit. But there's a whole lot more going on that really represents a fundamental shift in how this county addresses criminal justice. So, first of all, with regard to George W. Hill, I want to emphasize how challenging this transition is. It's a little like trying to fly a plane while you're rebuilding it while it's in flight. It's obviously a very, it's incredibly important that the transition happens in a safe way. You, you have 1,500 people who are in your custody, you have roughly 400 people who work there. It needs to be done seamlessly. But I'm happy to report that we are on track, that the transition will be complete by the first week in April. We're doing so really by doing this in bite sizes. Three critical services associated with running a jail is your medical, your food, and your, your commissary. Those were all separately RFP'd, and we have service providers who are stepping in and taking the reins from GEO in advance of the April 6th transition. So, that's made things, you know, more manageable. And the other piece I really want to emphasize or highlight is the fact that we have our new warden, who just started two weeks ago. Her name's Laura Williams. You all should meet her. She is an amazing, amazing person. She really breaks the mold of what you would think of as a prison warden. She comes from the background of drug treatment. Before she got into corrections, she worked with people who were dealing with opioids addiction. And so, she rose through the ranks in Allegheny County and Pittsburgh to becoming the deputy warden of their jail, associated with all treatment. So, she really comes with, it's baked into her DNA to look at folks not only as, you know, we need to run a secure jail setting, but these are people who need our help to get their feet back under them so that they can re-enter society and become productive members of society. So, you know, it really starts at the top, and Ms. Williams is incredible, so we're really happy to have her on board. You know, we are on track, but I want to really emphasize that we have a major challenge, which is staffing, and this is a situation that you're probably all aware. In every circumstance, hiring is really tough these days. It's particularly tough to hire for a jail setting. That's been the case everywhere. So, we're in the midst of, you know, a major hiring process, and we're doing so in a way where we're balancing the need to fully staff, but we also want to make sure that we're holding our standards of who we want to be working there to what, you know, reflects our values. So, it's not an automatic that everyone who works for GEO at the current jail is being offered employment. So, that's really what Laura is overseeing, is, is setting a new bar, creating a new culture that emphasizes both security, but also the fact that, you know, we're, we're working with people who are in our custody, and we're trying to get them, you know, in a place where when they leave, they're in a better position. And so, that's really underway, and it's, you know, done both with setting a new culture. It's also done by just paying people more. We're paying north of 35% more than GEO was paying. We're offering benefits that, you know, are far better than what GEO did. And like I said, we're just creating an environment that is, is different from what they have with GEO. So, you know, I, I hope, not I hope, I know that when we're 45 days from now, we will have completed this transition, and there's still going to be a lot of work underway following the transition, but it's a big step. And I appreciate the support of the League of Women Voters in, in everything that has gone into getting here over the past few years. In the couple of minutes I have left, like I said, there's, there's a lot going on overall in criminal justice, and it really is centered around a shift in mindset, going from the traditional, you know, separating the good from the bad and locking up the bad people, to one where it's centered around community safety, but with a long-term lens. And so, we're still, you know, supporting traditional crime prevention, supporting our district attorney, the Chester Partnership for Safe Neighborhoods, a focused deterrence model where you're focusing on the, the particular communities where the, you know, 90% of the violence is occurring. You really focus your efforts there, and, you know, despite the national headlines of homicides being up, in Delaware County, they're down. Homicides in Chester are down 38%. Murder clearance rates that used to be an astounding low 20% in Delaware County are now up near 60%. We funded for, for Jack, a new non-fatal shooting unit, four new detectives. So, we're doing all of that traditional stuff to keep the community safe, but we're also really focusing on early triage. And what I mean by that is, is people come into the criminal justice system, instead of the default being that they go to George W. Hill until the wheels of the criminal justice system can kind of get to them, we are identifying people at the outset who are better kept in the community, making sure that they, you know, get the treatment for any addiction or mental health problems that they have, and that they can stay in the community to, you know, continue with their job or the responsibilities as a parent. And that all happens really, like I said, through early triage, and that means from a physical perspective, we're building a central processing facility. So, as soon as someone comes in, they're not just being booked and sent to George W. Hill. This is going to be a place at the former Lima Detention Center where the district attorney's office, the public defender's office, will be present at the very outset at preliminary arraignment so that they can, you know, be a part of the conversation about bail decisions. It's not just happening unilaterally by the judge. And like I said, you know, triaging those who are best served with treatment on the outside instead of going by default to George W. Hill. So, you know, it's really a fundamental shift in how things work here. It's efficiency, not in a, you know, traditional sense, but just by sharing data between the public defender's office, the district attorney's office, the jail, the courts. You create a system that, that causes better outcomes for people who come into the criminal justice system. And ultimately, you know, feeding back to George W. Hill, the more efficient we are, the lower our prison population will be, and the more we can focus our, you know, your tax dollar, our resources on treatment, and, and, you know, the people who do need to be there, getting them back out in a better place. So, I will, I will stop there. Like I said, there's a lot going on, and you'll be hearing more from us about it, but I will just leave the note that, you know, everything you heard about from Monica about public health, the criminal justice system is the other side of that coin. You know, it's not, like I said, the, you know, lock them up and throw away the key. When you have an effective criminal justice system, it really is, you know, it's coming at it from a public health mindset, and that's really what we're doing. So, I will leave it at that, Olivia, and I'll.
Thank you. And, and I also want to thank you for your efforts and making, helping us may see that the prisoners who had not even been charged yet were able to vote in the fall, last fall, and with the absentee ballot process, and thank you very much. The, the next person is Christine Ruther. And Christine, it's all yours. Christine, you there? Christine?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I had myself on mute because lurking in my background are, are four dogs today. I have an extremely large pack with me, and they may start chiming in. It's always a pleasure to be here. You know, the, the League of Women Voters is near and dear to my heart, and in fact, what I'm going to speak today about primarily is elections. It's one of the reasons I ran. You know, I realized that there was work that needed to be done to modernize our election bureau and to make it more service-oriented, to really, to help and inform not just the voters, but people who were poll workers and people who might want to get on the ballot. And that was before Act 77 and the new machines and, and the pandemic. I have to say, over the last year and, and some, my work has gotten, as sort of liaison with the election board has gotten a lot easier because we now have a really terrific elections director. If you haven't had Jim Allen in to speak at one of your meetings or gatherings, I strongly recommend that you do. He came to us from the city of Chicago where they ran, you know, the city ran its own election operation in addition to that run by Cook County for the rest of the county. And he was very familiar with vote by mail. He views the job of an elections department to be primarily that of, of an educational role. You know, their job is to make sure that voters are informed, they're aware of their rights, they're aware of how to vote. You know, their job is to make sure that voters are informed, they're aware of their rights, they're aware of how to vote. And uh, you know, that poll workers are educated, that there's, you know, I know he'd love to be able to do more active recruiting with high school students to get them in. Um, he's pointed out to me that when uh Pennsylvania goes to um electronic poll books, which he says is very likely we're going to wind up doing at some point when the new sure system is in place. Uh, it it's going to be kids who show the way because not for nothing, a lot of our regular folks who work the polls, uh, many of them have been great in embracing the new technology, but a lot of them have found it a challenge. So having those teenagers there who kind of grew up with an appendage in the form of a phone in their hands um will be a real victory. But as you all know, elections has also been sort of a fraught area. Uh, the changes that were wrought by Act Seventy-Seven threaten to be undone by a court decision. We're also facing, um, you know, just an ongoing tide of litigation from people who I will call uh uh, you know, not necessarily reality-based in their view of elections, that suspicions based on nothing more than allegations have fueled uh yet another lawsuit um where I'm I'm a member, I'm and I'm a named uh party to it. I believe Mr. Lazarus is also a named party to it. I know our entire election staff, everybody who's served on our tabulation board um of both parties is is a party to this lawsuit because they're just convinced that literally um, everything they see when they go down to the election center, which is now located in Chester, the Wharf, uh, is it's Kabuki Theater that somewhere in the back room, there's a bunch of of people who are unknown scrawling on ballots and and counting them. Uh, and that's literally the kind of thing that's fueling these lawsuits. So it is a challenge, but we are lucky, I think, with some really great leadership at the county in the elections department and, you know, really the ongoing support of a lot of people around the county, both inside and outside county government who pitch in and make the elections work. Uh, I think things are getting a lot better. There's a lot more information available if you go to our website. Uh, we're trying to keep it up for each election. Um, although when we're in an environment like we are right now, that's a challenge. Uh, training, it's been tough not being able to do it in person because it's always great to be able to put your hands on the machines. But there are, there's really great training. We've increased the compensation that we're paying to poll workers. That doesn't mean that it's any easier to recruit people. So with that, let me just give you a quick update on on what is going on with the current litigation and redistricting. Uh, you may know as much as I do, so but this is, this is what Jim Allen shared with me this morning. Um, we, Act Seventy-Seven, as you know, has been challenged in court, but it was appealed by the governor's office immediately and that appeal uh resulted in a stay on the lower court ruling, which threw it out. Uh, accordingly, anybody who plans to vote by mail, certainly in the primaries, should go ahead and do it. I'd almost be surprised if there's a result by, you know, time to change things for the general election. Not that I expect the Supreme Court will throw out Act Seventy-Seven since they had an opportunity to do it um in connection with the twenty-twenty election and did not. But uh, so far, just so you know, the county did get out its annual mailing of the absentee ballot applications. They mailed out approximately a hundred thousand vote by mail applications um honored before January twenty-seventh, uh, which was actually well ahead of the state's deadline. Um, we've received back already twenty-five thousand applications. Uh, six thousand of those were online. Um, the remainder were returned paper applications. Uh, for those of you who are engaged in the political process, right now, circulators may not circulate petitions. It's not that you can circulate them and the date for filing them is later. Any petition that is circulated with and signed with today's date, those signatures won't be good. So please do not circulate yet. Um, this is because of the redistricting. Uh, I heard a rumor yesterday from or Sunday from one of our state legislators that the governor's office or the secretary of state was actually going in and asking for two separate petition periods, which I'm hoping is not going to be granted by the court because that will be a freaking disaster. Uh, for those of you who are really engaged at the granular level, this is a committee. Uh, this is a committee election year for the Democrats. So you're going to have all of those people in addition to the statewide races, in addition to um your state reps and state senators. So uh, plus the federal races. So I'm not a hundred percent sure why they, anybody thought this would be a good idea at the secretary of state's office, but I hope it's a rumor that isn't true. Um.
Christine, as I say, we're sort of running out of time here.
Okay, well, I will just, I'll leave it at that. Uh, but, you know, I don't know that there's much more I can tell you, except we will be pushing out updates and I know you'll be a partner in doing that when we can.
Well, thanks. Be joy working with you. Okay, um, let's, uh, next on the list here is uh Richard Romack. And um, as the new member on the board, uh, on the council, rather. Richard, I know you're here somewhere.
Okay, thank you very much, Olivia and the League of Women Voters. I appreciate this opportunity to be with you this afternoon. Um, I admire the work that you have done. I want to congratulate you for all you that you do as well. As you, as you had noted, I am the new member on county council. Um, I've been here now for a little over thirty days and I'm in a very unique situation. I am privileged to be working with my county council partners, Dr. Taylor, Elaine Schaefer, Kevin Madden and Christine Ruth. They all share different experiences. And right now I am getting to learn a little bit of everyone or what they're doing and and been helping out with them on their various projects. So I'm in the learning stage, but I could not have four better people to learn from. And I truly appreciate them, but they have given me some guidance. They have provided the leadership that helps me to be a part of their team and the work that they're doing as well. Some of the things that I have ran on when I ran the Rio County Council is that I believe in transparency. I want to continue the transparency. So therefore, the county, if you may have noticed, we are now sending out a newsletter. The newsletters try to inform people to let them know what we are doing, the work that we're doing and how that they can see you, the the progress that we are being making. I believe that if you go on the county's website, that you'll be able to sign up to s- to receive one of the newsletters as well. In saying that, I also pride myself that I want to make sure that the public is informed in all of our actions that we are doing and the different progress that we're making, the projects that are coming up. So I'm looking and hopefully that maybe ev- eventually we can get to have a couple of, I call them, community liaisons that will work along with county council and work with the community, who will work with community groups as well as community leaders to let them know what the county is doing, to make sure they're of, they know and that the county, the municipalities know about the various grants that's available to them, what work that can be done. A lot of them don't know. I mean, a lot of them don't really know. But I want to make sure they are informed. I want to make sure that we hear from the community as well, as far as some of their concerns. And this liaison could work closely with council to let us know what whistle in the minds of our community and their in our leaders. Because I believe that we all work together, such as working along with the League of Women Voters, that we can make this county a better place and continue to make sure it runs properly and runs safely. I admire the work that the community does do. But if we are on the same page, we can be that more effective. So I believe that can, my continued work to work with various organizations and community leaders that we can continue to build it and move on such as that. And then my last thing I I want to say is that I have been, had the opportunity to visit Delaware County Community College and I have visited like their trade school that they have. I want to continue to work with the unions to build relationships, to continue to build various trade schools and trainings of around the around the county, because I know a lot of young people, well, that would help them in order in finding them jobs to move on into the future. So there's a quite a few things we want to do, quite a lot of things I could talk about. But those are some of the main issues I wanted to throw out after today. And once again, thank you so much for having us.
Well, thank you very much for being here. And last but not least is Howard Lazarus. And um, I I I've got to know how, um, very early in the process. Um, and he has been uh such a help to getting information to the league when we needed it, things like that as well. But anyway, um, our new ex, our executive director.
Thank you very much. Um, as we listen to our elected officials talk about all that they have initiated in the in the the county, it's really been quite a remarkable period over the last year. Since we talked last, um, we launched upon a vaccination program that got us to about eighty percent of our community being vaccinated. And that was done without a county health department. We conducted two elections. Um, we've been able to carefully manage the funds that the federal government has given us under the CARES Act, which we committed one hundred percent of those money, including many aspects that are for community support. Now, we're in the process of taking um input for the American Re Sort, American Rescue Plan Act funds. And there is um both a tutorial and an opportunity to provide input on the county's website and through the help of our solicitors office, particularly Jonathan Lichtenstein and Sandy Garrison and Human Services. We're one of the national leaders in leveraging um emergency rental assistance program dollars as well and looking for programs that can help homeowners into the future. We've hired the most dynamic, diverse and talented group of leaders. Councils empowered them to go out and do great and wonders things and you see the results of that support from our elected leaders with the staff. This past year, we took a thirty million dollar deficit and with council's help, we now have about a one hundred million dollar reserve that we can use both to fund critical programs, but also manage the tax burden on all of our taxpayers in the county. We had the opportunity to go back to the rating agencies this past year and we improved our bond ratings to get a double A plus rating from standard and boards for the first time uh ever. The sustainability initiatives that Elaine talked about include us getting the largest alternate fuel incentive grant in the state for our electric vehicle conversion. And because of that success, we've been bigger and better, looking to include an additional forty charging stations and sixty electric vehicles in the county's fleet. We're also looking at a sustainability event this coming birthday. On the public safety side, we're in the process of upgrading our nine-one-one system, radio communications, including grants from the state, which all of your elected officials helped us lobby for and receive. And we are rebuilding the medical examiner's office as well. Uh, this past year was also about structure and the budget and our finances. A big part of that was putting together a capital improvement program that outlined how over the coming years, we're going to invest one hundred fifty million dollars in our community, including the seventy million dollars council recently authorized in new loans. Uh, Mr. Madden talked about uh public safety, community safety, including transitioning the prison and working on a better outcome for young adults in our community through juvenile activities. So with that, all of that was done, as all of our council members said, under the shadow of of COVID. And we look now, hopefully in the coming months, to go back to something of a more normal operation. And to do that, we're going to look at putting together the pieces of a strategic plan that can help us plan our use of resources effectively over the next five to ten years. Really fortunate that each of our council members has a specific area of interest to help guide that strategic plan. Mr. Madden is providing leadership in the area of community justice and safety. Uh, Ms. Ruthur is an advocate for better and more responsive and accountable government. Ms., excuse me. Um, Ms. Schaefer has talked in depth about our approach to a sustainable future and sustainable development. And Ms. Mr. Womack has brought forward plans for safe and connected neighborhoods. And of course, without the leadership of our council chair, we wouldn't be on the cusp of having the first approved health department in the state in over a generation. All of what councils asked us to do, all of which they are pursuing, is firmly rooted in the values of transparency, accountability, sustainability and equity. And those values are woven into all the documents we produce and everything that we do. They're supportive of staff, pursuing thought and practice leadership in all of our endeavors. And lastly, I don't want to pass on the fact that over the last year, we've leveraged over sixty full-time equivalents and volunteer efforts, over twelve thousand hours. That is the most remarkable thing I've seen in terms of compute, community spirit in quite some time. And it speaks volumes and wonders about the community we live in and the engagement of our citizens, including the members of the League of Women Voters. So appreciate the opportunity to share some of these thoughts with you and look forward to responding to whatever questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I can't say enough about um how wonderful you've all been uh in this last year in working with the league and and listening to us and and letting us share our our passions, thoughts and and desires. But I think um the other thing I wa- really want to do now is turn this over to Kathy Youngman, who's been sort of our Vessine Heinsen person, making this all work today. And she is going to answer, uh, put together the questions and ask them uh, so that uh I could uh be working on, listening to all of you at this point. But um Kathy, um, it's, I, the ball's in your court now.
Thank you very much. Um, we had a number of questions uh that were answered by you guys in the chat already and I really do appreciate you doing that. That's a very good way that there can be direct dialogue uh with the people here today. We have fifty people attending, that's pretty good. Um, there were some questions that were submitted ahead of time also um about the Covanta Chester incinerator. Can um Elaine, are you the person who could answer that or does someone want to pick up on that? What what's the status of that and what is the county doing with that?
And could I just add one thing in there? Uh, not everybody has to answer, you know, not each council person, but it's mostly if whoever thinks they would be best able to.
Yeah, I I will, uh, I'll fill in because I'm the uh county council liaison with the Solid Waste Authority and for the moment, anyway, I'm on the Solid Waste Authority board, although I'm stepping down after the March meeting and uh my spot has been posted. So if you know anybody who wants to serve on that board. Um, the Covanta contract is in the process of, it's not Covanta, it's EQT. They are the successor to Covanta, they bought their assets. Uh, there is a contract under negotiation with the Solid Waste Authority. My expectation uh based on the work that we're doing at the Solid Waste Authority is that there will be a uh a contract out there. I believe the terms are probably going to be discussed publicly at the March meeting of the Solid Waste Authority. It's not, but I can tell you the reason why there will be a contract um which will likely have a three-year term is because even to move the waste away from uh the waste-to-energy facility in Chester and to get it to a landfill, there needs to be approximately fifteen million dollars of investment in the counties and not the counties and the authorities uh transfer stations. They've really been allowed to degenerate because for my lifetime in the county, anyway, the goal has been to subsidize the cost of waste disposal. And instead of looking at things like reducing the waste stream, reuse and recycle, which is very much a focus of our solid waste plan. And because of that, uh, there's a huge amount of deferred maintenance. You know, literally no money was spent in keeping options available. So to be able to move all of the waste that right now goes, a third of it goes directly from municipalities and haulers directly to the waste-to-energy facility in Chester. Two-thirds of it go to the transfer stations and then, you know, one goes a short distance from the transfer station in Chester to uh, to the incinerator. The others go from the Marple Transfer Station. But to be able to move what is over four hundred thousand tons of trash to a location other than that waste-to-energy facility, the transfer stations really need to be upgraded. Um, so it's a work in progress and I believe, you know, my approach to the three-year contract has been that it's it's really not. And I believe, you know, my approach to the three-year contract has been that it's really necessary to buy the time to make those investments.
There was another environmental question that came in when people signed up. Will there be a county-wide plan to mitigate the effects such as erosion, flooding and road surface damage caused by the unusually heavy rainfall of recent summer and fall seasons? Is there any general county-wide mitigation plan?
Well, our sustainability plan will address climate change and the measures that we need to take to mitigate. As it specifically relates to transportation and roads, you know, I have not seen that coming out of the process so far. I mean, that's really a state PennDOT issue, as most of our roads are owned by the state. There are programs already in place for mitigating some of the, especially on our smaller roads that are, you know, deteriorating more quickly. That's run through our Conservation District Board. But that's actually an interesting approach to include that in our sustainability plan. And I'll bring it up with the committee that thus far, that has not really been one of the chapters that is included. But it's a very valid point.
Thank you, Elaine. There was a specific health question about masking in schools. And someone was wondering, will the Delaware County Health Department be providing any cohesive guidance to schools on masking and other health and safety policies? Right now, the schools do their own thing, but is there a county thought-out plan for that? Monica, I guess.
I'll take that one. So our Board of Health actually started to discuss this during their January meetings. As you can see, our other counties have, other counties, Chester County and Montgomery County, have issued recommended guidance that goes along with percent positivity and incident rate and vaccination status in terms of masking indoors, outdoors. And so there's a pretty much a kind of table in that goes in line with what the state has recommended. And so our plan going forward or the Board of Health's plan, along with our director, is to issue the same recommendations once we are officially approved.
Thank you very much. Another question that we got was to Kevin, I guess. What percentage of people imprisoned in Delaware County are there because of inability to post bail? In other words, they're there for pre-conviction or for parole violations as opposed to actually serving sentences?
I think, given the question, I think the question, the asker probably has a sense that they're both quite high, those numbers, and they're right. So sixty-two percent today of people at George W. Hill are there because they couldn't post bail. And this is an additive, okay? But thirty-four percent of people of the overall population are on probation or parole violation. So again, a pretty high number. And another way to look at it is of all of the populations, roughly fifteen hundred people who are there, only nine percent have been sentenced, who are actually there serving a sentence. And it's an extraordinarily high number of people who are not there as a sentenced offender, but are rather there because the wheels of the criminal justice system have them there.
And another question that came in, can you describe a little more about the Central Booking Authority that you mentioned already in your update?
Sure, yeah. So currently, you've got a whole host of, you know, police departments around the county that do their own booking. And this is something that frankly, the law enforcement community, the police officers have been asking for for a while. And there was kind of a pilot of it early in the pandemic, you know, in order to sort of reduce the sort of, you know, contact points to one central place. It happened to media. But what we're looking for is something that will be permanent and it will be in Lima and makes it such that any processing, any booking that takes place, Upper Darby will probably still do their own, but everyone else would go into Lima. Anyone who's been arrested would go straight there and would be processed. And so there's a number of advantages to doing that. One is just from a, you know, from a police department perspective, they can drop off the arrested person and get right back out on the streets. So you've got a safer community with police officers who are actually out there instead of, you know, spending hours of their time doing the booking work back at their police department. Two, this is what I alluded to earlier, is that when it's centralized, you can have representatives of the Public Defender's Office, representatives of the District Attorney's Office, who are right, who are involved right at the outset, right at arraignment, so that the judge who's on duty isn't sort of, you know, making bail decisions without anyone from either of those offices also involved, who can raise their hand and say, hey, you know what? This doesn't make a whole lot of sense. This person actually, you know, doesn't need to be put on bail. There's an alternative that would be better for this person. So that's really kind of the second real benefit to it. So that's kind of the idea. I hope that's helpful. And I want to be clear, there are very few places that do this. This would be bringing Delaware County from being a very fragmented system, one that's frankly a laggard in a lot of ways, including our private jail, to being really at the cutting edge of what other counties are attempting to do.
I just want to add on to that, that something that we are lucky to have is the cooperation and agreement from our DA and our public defender on this. They are both on the same page and they both feel that this would be a drastic improvement in the way in our criminal justice system to do this. So that we're lucky that that is happening, that they agree, that they're behind this. And that's what's going to make it work.
Absolutely. And one other benefit I forgot to mention is you can get people into treatment immediately, right? You'd have a liaison at the office who's saying, all right, we've got, you know, outpatient drug treatment that we can bring this person to directly, instead of them, you know, sort of sitting at George W. Hill, not getting the best treatment for them, that can happen really immediately. But it's like Elaine said, we're fortunate to have, in an inherently adversarial system, we've got people who are all rowing in the same direction.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. Because I think members of our league oftentimes go to media for different programs and responsibilities. There were several questions about the parking garage. Could someone give us an update on what's going to happen with the parking structure? And will there be more parking near the courthouse?
That's a Howard.
I can say where we are. We are working with Media Borough to get surface parking improved as a interim special use. And on that lot, we can probably get about eighty parking spaces, which includes numerous parking spots for electric vehicles. It doesn't replace all of the parking that was lost. We have met with borough officials to look at some other alternatives too, including gauging their interest in building parking structures going forward, where we could participate by essentially buying some of the spaces. Long-term uses of that lot on Orange Street, really kind of still in a planning stage. We do have a desire to bring everyone back into media who's currently outside. But, you know, we have to look and see what the uses will be. We've just completed a facilities condition and needs assessment, which also gave us an understanding of what our current and future spaces, space requirements are. Structured parking is expensive and into the tune of somewhere around forty, fifty thousand dollars a space. And if we can find ways to partner on the construction of it and alleviate some of the direct costs to the county and therefore the county taxpayers, I think that's something that's worth our investigation. But in order to alleviate some of the short-term impacts on both county staff, visitors to the government center, the courts, parking in neighborhoods, we are looking at bumping up the amount of parking that we can have on that lot. It's interesting to, you know, that parking demand fluctuates during the week. It's certainly higher on Mondays and Tuesdays when jurors are being brought in before they're seated. And the other interesting thing that I've never seen is I've never seen what it's like when everybody comes to work. Because for the last year and a half, we've had various remote working schedules. And I think we'll continue to see that in the future because it's a definite quality of life impact. So we're going to have to evaluate that as well before we start spending any of your money on putting concrete in the ground.
Thank you, Howard. Olivia, it's one o'clock. Do you want to go longer or?
Yes, as far as I'm concerned, we can go longer. I just didn't know how much more we wanted to tape and that was really it. But if you want, just keep it taped now, we can. Do you have more questions that I had a feeling from looking at the list, you might?
Okay, I can ask them or you can?
Sure, go on ahead. Why don't you, let's take another, you know, ten minutes, fifteen?
Yeah, we had a lot of questions that were asked. Several of them concerned transparency in the funding, the rescue money and the CARES Act funding. And you mentioned something about having a place on the website where we could input ideas. Can you explain that a little bit better?
Sure, when you go to the county's website, there's a, there's a link to the ARPA site. What we've added there is a presentation that discusses what the allowable uses are and the constraints on the ARPA funds. Also, there is a web address where you can submit ideas on potential uses, who's going to be the responsible entity for it and what the estimated cost is. And Ms. Pitts, who works in my office and I review that every day, we bring all requests for uses of ARPA funds back to council so that they can deliberate and see how best to use them as well. The most current allocations are included in that presentation. They're also identified in the county's budget, which is posted on the website as well. But there's still a substantial amount of unprogrammed dollars and uncommitted dollars that council would certainly like to get input from the community.
If you could put the link in the chat, Howard, if you get a chance, that would be great. One other thing that people ask specifically about Elaine was the update on the Don Guanella property and what's going on with that.
So we own it now. We have title. The one, and we have made initial payment. We will actually go through a process of the correct value. The way eminent domain works is the buyer, the government entity, comes up with the price that they believe the land is. That's what you put down. And then you go to something called the Board of View and you fight out what the, you know, if they don't agree with the price you have given, you fight out in front of a board of you about what the price should be. That usually gets appealed and eventually you come up with a price. So but title transfers, once we have declared it and put the money down. So we have title now. In terms of planning for that property, as I mentioned during my comments, we are expecting a proposal from a consultant within a week that will set forth a master planning process, which will be very, very public. There'll be surveys, there'll be a website, there'll be many public meetings to take from all corners of the county what people would like to see. That will be our largest county park. And much like Ridley Creek State Park serves the entire county, not just the places around it. I mean, we all drive twenty minutes to get there because it's so amazing. This is what that park will be like. So it's important that we get input from all corners of the county because all corners will be using it. And that process will probably take six to eight months because it's, you know, there are buildings there that some will be demolished, some we may reuse. There's a lot of, there are a lot of decisions to make about the portion of that property that is already disturbed. I do think that there's a commitment amongst council and amongst all of the green, everyone who has been involved to keep the forested area forested, that was sort of the main point of purchasing the property, to preserve and conserve the natural resources that are on that property. But as I said, forty acres is a lot of acres that we now have to kind of play with and decide what the best use will be for the county.
Thank you, Elaine. Monica, we had a health question about some places currently test their wastewater for COVID-19 DNA. Does Delaware County plan to start something like this? And also, is this kind of surveillance used for other public health issues like the opioid crisis?
Yes, so we have been looking, well, really, it's our Environmental Health Bureau of Environmental Health and our director there and our director of the Health Department have been looking at various ways that we can monitor, whether it's COVID-19 or other areas in the county, other concerns in the county, and looking at what others are doing as, you know, best practice that's out there and seeing how we can implement it in our, in our health department. And so that's really kind of a philosophy that we've been going with moving forward, looking at our neighbors, seeing what best practices are there, and then seeing how we can be innovative to make sure that we're meeting Delaware County needs.
Okay, thank you very much. We had one thing about elections before I turn it back over to Olivia. There's something in the chat that the Elections Director told Christina that she can't share contact information for poll workers. Could it at least be shared with one person per municipality? We need to call and email people to get them all settled. I guess that's.
You know, I think what is being pointed out, one of the biggest challenges we're having is recruiting and retaining poll workers. I mean, we lost a lot of people because of the change in the machines. You know, it's also, not for nothing, a lot of people, it's become a tense place to spend the day. Neighbors aren't necessarily chatting and being as friendly as they used to be at the polls. We don't have a full-time poll worker coordinator at this juncture. We probably do need one. I think what people have been experiencing is, you know, for a long time, there was really a very informal process of filling the vacancies. And to be honest with you, the county didn't necessarily care if they got filled or not. There was, you know, it might have mattered where the vacancies were, maybe it didn't. But I think right now, it was, and in the past, it was volunteers who stepped up from one party or the other, was coordinators for the parties who typically stood up and tried to find volunteers to fill slots in their municipalities. The local committees would do it, sometimes cooperatively, sometimes not. I think what the vision is currently is we really need to, the county needs, the county election department needs to own those relationships. And so I think that's one of the goals, which is, and I think they're also very uncomfortable pushing out the information for volunteers to committee members who may or may not really be in a position to assign them. So I'm not saying that the work, the committee, that the political party committees want to do is a problem. It could be really, really helpful and it's the way we've always done it. But we've got to figure out how the county is going to run this process. Because, you know, Colleen Guiney is a force of nature, Carol Miller on the Republican side. Both of them have always stepped up and tried to fill slots, but we don't know if they're going to be there. And the county is going to be responsible for filling those slots, whether they are or not.
Is there some way that the league can help you with that?
You know, again, I would really encourage the league to engage Jim Allen on this topic. It's one that I know he is, it's a huge issue for him. It's a huge issue for me because I get all the calls when people are trying to figure out what's going on. So I would encourage you to have a session on that. Sooner rather than later, if the primary stays where it's supposed to be.
Okay, thank you very much. Olivia, can I turn this back over to you?
And I'd like to ask Christine one last question about the, what she was just talking about. I think another question is, the league had worked at one point on helping train people on how to use voting machines. And I think that's sort of where we were coming from on the idea that we would have, you know, we would help on trying to get poll workers and create a thing. We also will still be doing voter registration and things like that. And if we had materials that we could hand out in different places, I think that might be a step. Because I know people have told me, I'd like to be a poll worker, but I don't know who to contact.
We know what I think, again, this is, yeah, this is, well, I'd be really happy to. I'd be really happy to facilitate that conversation and it is in fact a. A spot that Mr. Allen and I have talked about. I'm not sure. I don't pay minute attention to his budget, so I'm not a hundred percent sure if that role is in there this year or not, but. It should be, and it should be a full-time job because training poll workers, recruiting poll workers, educating people about how the polling place works. Is, is a full-time job. It's, you know, there's lots and lots of work for that person to be doing. And it's not a part-time. You know, seasonal position and that's, and Christina Iacano has been filling in in that role. On a seasonal basis has, has been a miracle worker, given the resources she has and the time she's able to commit to it, but. It, that is, I think that job needs to be a full-time job and that's something that I would love him to hear that from the league as well. And also hear, hear about how the league. How the league can help with, with training. You guys have been a great partner and. Hopefully, we're getting to the point where, you know, libraries are welcoming people again. We can start doing more. You know, introductions to the voting machines and the process.
Well, we do know our founding mothers expect us to continue this.
You know, I'm with you, I'm with you.
Well, listen, this is enough for today. You've been wonderful as usual. And I think you've done a terrific job explaining how the county operates and what's going on. And what we need to do and how we can all play a part and a role in this. And I do like the new county website and it's, it's true, you can find all sorts of things there that we weren't used to being able to find before. So thank you, thank you so much for today and the giving us the time. And I'm sure you know, you're going to hear from us, but you know, on the other hand, we really appreciate all the work you're doing and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying again this year.
Thank you.
Very much.
We learned a lot.
Thanks, Olivia. You're welcome.